But today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be for us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now turn for the.
First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. Roll call, please.
Mayor Melonazo, Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Broderick.
Here.
Councilor Caulfield.
Here.
Councilor Dakota.
Here.
Councilor Elliott.
Here.
Councilor Martin.
Here.
Councilor Mendoza.
Here.
Councilor Mercia.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
First order of business, acceptance of the October 19 minutes. Council Elliot, second, Council Mendoza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, city manager's agenda, communications from the city manager, responses to city council motions. Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Acting Mayor, Vice Mayor. In our packet, we received a response about foreclosure properties and receivership, and it was very interesting to receive all this. And they talked about one area that has been recognized as ripe for improvement is the handling of code enforcement in association with vacant and foreclosed properties. And we got an idea of what was going on here and the targeting of certain properties and what they're going to do about it. And I would like to make a motion that we refer this, we accept this communication, and as suggested, to refer this to the proper subcommittee, which perhaps would be the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee, as suggested by Adam Baiki, as well as at that meeting which will be televised when I think Councilor Caulfield is the chairperson of Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee. We would then meet the deputy director, Kendra Amaral, and the building commissioner, Robert Marsilia. They would attend that meeting and provide us with some information. And there'd be questions that we could ask and have them answered. So that's what they've suggested through this communication, and I would like to make that in the form of a motion.
So move second by Council Caulfield. Council Caulfield?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. To the Council, Council Leader, Mercia. What is this discussion? The foreclosure?
We received a communication in our packet in regards to development services, foreclosed properties, and receivership.
Wouldn't that?
I don't know.
I mean, I would gladly convene a meeting, but wouldn't that be the economics Subcommittee that be involved with that?
Well, are we not talking about properties and neighborhoods?
Yeah, but.
I don't know.
It doesn't mean nothing to me, but I thought the economics, you should have a joint meeting, the economics Subcommittee and the neighborhood Subcommittee.
I don't care where it goes, as long as we can televise it and talk about it.
Okay. Council Martin?
I mean, I was gonna suggest housing, to be honest with you.
Right. We could have a triple Subcommittee.
So I think I'm the, I don't know who the membership are. I'm the Chair Economic Development. I think I'm the Chair of Housing as well. I'm not quite sure about that, but I think.
I thought the housing, I did see the housing Subcommittee, but I thought it referred to Julian Steele.
Well, it's not just that. I think it's, that's subsumed in those issues. There was a separate committee for Julian Steele, which those issues are now to be addressed at the housing Subcommittee, but it's not limited to that. So if it's, if you want it to be joint, I think that's fine, but I think it should be neighborhood and housing, perhaps.
I personally don't care where it goes, as long as we discuss it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we do, as Council Martin brought it up, we do have a housing Subcommittee, an economics Subcommittee, neighborhood and traffic deals with neighborhood issues.
Well, I thought that foreclosed properties took place in neighborhoods. That's why I suggested.
Yeah, I guess it does. It can't happen anywhere else.
Well, it doesn't happen, and I don't know, but I don't care really.
So moved the.
Mayor, whatever you like to do.
Motion to refer the document to the housing Subcommittee.
Second?
That's fine, second.
Second, Council Mercia. All those in favor? Council Mendoza.
I know the manager referred to this in our Subcommittee meeting, and I would maybe like to give him an opportunity to give us the highlights of what's in the document, if he wishes. I'm not sure if he's prepared to do that.
I don't know if I dare. The, essentially what this is, it's a, it's an effort that's been utilized in some other communities, and this is a, an outgrowth of some discussions that have been ongoing with our new Inspection Services Division and our stat office, and obviously our law office, to put in place a, or take advantage of the Attorney General's receivership program, and it's even something that we can do ourselves, and that's what we're working out some of the ways that this would take place. But in a nutshell, it would simply be a case where we would be able to ensure that the foreclosed properties are being, are actually complying with our vacant and foreclosing property ordinance that was adopted. But then, being able to go into, if they are not in proper condition, if they are not compliant with code, if they're buildings that aren't being, that aren't in our minds considered habitable, that we would be able to work either with the Attorney General's office or on our own, to go into court and place these properties into receivership. And then we would, so granted, we would be able to select a receiver that would go in and take over the property, make sure that it's being maintained, make sure that the, it's being brought up to code. There would be no money that would go out of the city's pocket, and then ultimately the property could be sold and the investments are returned. The goal of all of this, of course, is to, you know, take care of problem properties that we see in the city and where the property owner, the new property owner, the institution that foreclosed, is not in fact taking care of the, taking care of the property. So we could have more details certainly at a Subcommittee meeting in which we can go through this. The city solicitor, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, it's a fair summary. There, we have done this sporadically in the past, and, but this would definitely be a much more coordinated effort headed up by both DPD and Inspection Services of directing legal efforts in certain directions at particular problematic properties, and again, to do so on a much larger scale than we've ever done before.
We've have, we've discussed some ideas along these lines, in fact, with Representative Golden, who, you know, is somewhat familiar with this, with this process as well. And so it's something I think that, again, we've seen it, we have a new staff person on over in DPD that has used it in another community, and the experience that the other communities have had has been very positive in terms of turning around blighted properties.
It does seem to me to provide an incentive to property owners to keep up their properties to avoid this process, but I look forward to hearing more details about it at the Subcommittee meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Council Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for addressing the Hellenic Academy with the traffic concerns. And you appointed, or you directed the traffic engineer to look into those issues, Mr. Manager?
That's correct.
And would this be a long, drawn-out issue? Because they're very concerned over the academy that some of the.
No, I wouldn't think it would be a long, drawn-out. I mean, there's some of the stuff, some of the ideas that they brought forward are, I think, are going to be very easy, some might be a little bit more complex for us to deal with, but I would hope that, you know, we just have this new traffic engineer on in the last week or so, so I would hope he'd be out there meeting, and we could put some of these recommendations in place pretty quickly. Thank you.
Before we go any further, can we get a vote on the motion presented earlier? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other comments on communications from the city manager? Council Elliot?
It's not a communication from the manager, but I did want to make note, and I know the manager was there Friday night at the opening of the UMass Lowell, or the new, new Sanga Center, if you will, and many of us were there, and I just wanted to congratulate the chancellor for an outstanding job over the last eight months in renovating the arena. The arena was full. Looks like it's, you know, it's back on its feet, and it's going to be very productive again for the city and UMass Lowell. So I was, I was impressed with the, with the new scoreboard and, you know, all of the new additions to the arena, so just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Martin?
I'm not sure, there's a bunch of communications here that were on our desk tonight, but there was yesterday an announcement at City Hall about the state's selection of green communities, and Lowell was one of the communities selected in this group. There were six acknowledged yesterday. I'm not sure how many there are around the state, maybe between forty and fifty. But it goes to the efforts of DPD and some of the efforts of the council, the stretch energy code, what we're doing with Amoresco, and there are significant savings. The members of the state delegation were all present. The mayor was present, Councilor Murphy and I were there, and it was heartening to see that Lowell is at the forefront. Most of the other places were suburban communities where it's a little easier to do some of these things than we've taken on here, but there is some financial gain to the city. And also during the ceremony, Steve Green of the building, the Green Building Commission here in the city was recognized for a special achievement. So I don't think we would have made as much progress without the Green Building Commission or the work of the Environmental Subcommittee or the work of the folks at DPD. So I think it was a worthwhile effort for the city to undertake this, and I think it's going to bear financial rewards, too. Almost every town manager that spoke said they went into this reluctantly, but now that they realize there are dollars to be had at the end of this process, they have all embraced it, and I know Manager Lynch has as well. So I think it's a positive development for the city and one that's ultimately going to save us some money.
Thank you. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm also thinking that it's nice to shine a spotlight sometimes on our city employees that do a tremendous job, and I'd like to thank the Lowell Fire Department. This is campaign season, and they waged their own campaign, the 500 winter coat giveaway that took place this past Saturday. They held this, and they gave away not only 500 coats, but blankets and bedding, and that surely warmed people, and it warmed my heart, too, and I just wanted to thank them publicly for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Excuse me, anything further? Next item on the agenda is a communication from.
Accept the communications.
Accept the communications, place them on file.
So moved.
So moved. Council Mercia, second by Council Elliot. All those in favor? Next order of business, communication from the manager, the appointment of Diane Waddell to the Hunger Homeless Commission pursuant to the authority vested in me as city manager under Chapter 382 of the Acts of 1991 and the Code of the City of Lowell, Article 7, Section 9-23. I am appointing the following person to the Hunger Homeless Commission for the two-year term expiring October 26, 2012, or until such time thereafter as successor is appointed and qualified, Diane Waddell, Waddell, 9 West Adams Street, Unit Number 1, Lowell, Mass. Under the above referenced ordinance, confirmation by the city council is not required. I would be happy to answer any inquiries you may have concerning this appointment. Looking for a motion to accept and place on file. Council Mendoza, second by Council Dakota. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the communication from the planning board, the report on Chapter 290 zoning, various vehicle-related sections along with ordinance to refer to the public hear, to refer to public hearings, excuse me. And I believe we have.
That's just the one. Everyone has a copy of that.
Everybody in the council has a copy of this, I believe, and I think we have two persons registered to speak.
John Hamlet from the Pottawattville Citizens Council.
Thank you. My name is John Hamlet. I live at 495 Varnum Avenue, and I do represent the Pottawattville Citizens Council. We have a zoning Subcommittee also that I head. I am joined tonight by Deb Forgione, who is the chairperson of the Pottawattville Citizens Council, and Dick Souza, the former chairperson of PCC. As a quick overview, the proposed zoning change allows for drive-throughs in a zoned neighborhood business district, whereas previously this was not allowed. We understand that the planning board may have made a recommendation or a suggestion, and we would emphasize that we believe it is critical that this proposed zoning change be sent to the city council zoning Subcommittee, so that we can learn more and we can give neighborhood feedback. We are aware that there is a 65-day window that closes on November 14th, and we are also aware there's another neighborhood association that has put forth this change as a result of a possible commercial opportunity, and we are prepared to respond quickly, but we need the facts. And the fact remains that this particular zoning change affects all neighborhoods, not just one. All neighborhoods with zoned neighborhood business districts. We have three, and we believe a full review of the facts is warranted. We respectfully request that you turn this over to a city council zoning Subcommittee for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe we have one more speaker?
Deb Forgione from the Pottawattville Citizens Council.
I would have preferred to speak after I heard the discussion among everyone, but I just wanted to bring up a few items about this moment, what they call a teachable moment. This started in September, and so if we do not have a Subcommittee meeting where we could, as all the neighborhoods get together and understand it and see that it's a blanket zoning change where each neighborhood does have different characteristics, and we just don't think it should be a blanket zoning change without the input for the neighbors, excuse me. And one of the things I had a concern with is, as we make these changes, if I'm living next to a neighborhood business district tonight, if they're watching TV, they don't even know that you're even thinking about changing that zoning. So they're sitting there thinking that, you know, the building next door is zoned a certain way, that's how they bought their house, and now they're going to find out if we don't make everyone aware of what the plan is, that that could change overnight for them. So there are just so many more steps that really need to be done when these kinds of blanket changes are being made. It is going to definitely, definitely help Centerville for you to make that one change in their neighborhood, but it's not going to help us. And I don't know how the other neighborhoods feel, like the Lower Highlands or the Acre. That's why if we all got together and we heard what it is that you planned on doing, and why did you want to do it? Why do you want to make a change like this? And this 65-day period, if this started in September, the planning board got it on October 20th, and here we are going into November with a window where you're saying, like, you've got to do this within 65 days. The pressure's on to get people out, bring them out, and have them learn about it. So it's the whole process right now that really has to be looked at, is how are you going to do the future zoning changes? With the new media that we have, everyone's on Facebook, everyone has email, there are websites, there are so many ways for you to get us information. So the way we are finding out about it seems unusual, only because there are so many ways we could have known what was going on, and really, we do care about it, and we want the city to go forward. We want Centerville to be able to have that area be built up, but not at the detriment of all the other neighborhoods. So that's what I'd like to say, as you consider that to push this to a public meeting when we'll only have two hours to sit here, talk with you, learn about it, make decisions. I don't think two hours is enough for most neighborhoods to comprehend and absorb what you want to do, when this has been going on since September, and you, you've all absorbed it, and you understand it. And I learned a new word this week from Adam Baiki, and he called it, it was an arcane situation, which means not too many people even get it. So I just think that there needs to be more time, and thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Thank you. I agree with the speakers, and the communication from the planning board to the council, or from Eric Claussen, does indicate that the particular article that they're referring to, the planning board did vote unanimously that the board felt that there needs to be more discussion, a further discussion on this. So I would motion that we do refer this to the zoning Subcommittee for a thorough discussion and evaluation of not only this, but all of the other amendments. Excuse me.
Motion by Council Elliot, second by Council Murphy. Any more discussion? Council Caulfield?
The public hearing will be November 16th. Is that so, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Clerk? The public hearing.
What you could do, Counselor, is remove that section from the ordinance and refer the remaining part of the ordinance to a public hearing on the 16th.
Oh, that's.
The planning board voted to recommend all of the other changes.
Yes, but what I'd like to see happen is have the council Subcommittee on Zoning convene a meeting before the public hearing, so people can get, have an input into this issue. I don't want to see a council Subcommittee meeting after the public hearing. I'd rather see it before. Is that, was that what your motion, Counselor?
I, the motion was to look particularly at, I guess I didn't specify, but to look at Article 12. So yes, I think we should look specifically at that amendment, which is of concern of the neighborhood. The other amendments, I think we should proceed through, proceed with that public hearing and separate that one out.
Do you want to amend the motion to be a motion to send the drive-through use types in Article 12 to a zoning Subcommittee?
Correct.
Prior to the public hearing?
Unless there are any objections, it seems to make sense. Everything was voted unanimously from, from the planning board, including taking that particular section relative to drive-throughs and have a further discussion.
I'm the chair of the Subcommittee, so we'll get a meeting before the 16th.
And Counsel, that will give not only the people who reside in neighborhoods a feel what's going to happen, but it also gives the council a general conception of what's going to happen.
Thank you, Counsel. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let's just be clear about it. We're setting a public hearing for November 16th. There are other items in the zoning that were unanimously supported. There's no problem with what we're hearing there, but I don't know what the rush is with this particular item about drive-throughs. So what the clerk is saying, we're completely removing it out. It's not subjected to 65 days in a hurry, and let's rush. So we would send that to a zoning Subcommittee. That's the way it stands, and that's what I would support, and that makes sense. We can do that.
Correct. Counsel.
Well, except that's not what Council Caulfield said. What's recommended here from DPD is that, at least as I read it, is that the whole thing be referred to the public hearing on the 16th, and I'm also hearing tonight that the zoning Subcommittee should meet prior to that. You know, this 65-day window is not something we created, it's imposed by state law. It's only required that we hold the public hearing on the 16th. We don't have to act that day. That hearing could be continued if there are still issues pending at that time. So what I thought I heard, anyway, was that the entire issue would be referred to the public hearing. There would be a zoning Subcommittee meeting before that to fully discuss at least this drive-through issue. There doesn't seem to be much controversy about any of these other things, but who knows? There could be some concerns about those as well that come up at the Subcommittee meeting. And then if all the issues are aired, we'll proceed with the public hearing on the 16th. If not, we'll at least have had the opportunity to hold that public hearing. It could be continued for further discussion if need be, but at least we wouldn't have to start over. And I think that's, at least as I read this memo from DPD, that's what they requested, the action the council take. I know the council doesn't have to do that, but I don't see how anybody's really prejudiced by doing that.
Counsel Mercia?
Through you, Mr. Vice Mayor, to the solicitor, is it possible that we could pull that drive-through issue right out of the mix, so that we're not subjected to 65 days before or after a, you know, I think it's going to take longer than that. We're talking about one neighborhood that's concerned, but maybe others are, too. What if we hold a two-hour meeting in the zoning Subcommittee and we're still not sure on what to do, and some want it, some don't? You know, what if there are more questions than that? I don't want to tie this in to the others that are probably, you know, worth getting. What is the rush? I don't get it. We haven't had this change for how many years, and now we get a rush for 65 days? I don't, I don't want to, I want to follow the law, but I, can we pull it out? Can we pull this out?
You can, A, you can pull it out.
Well, why don't we just do that?
And I was going to say, B, the, what Council Martin was referring to is also an option. And, and I guess one thing to keep in mind is that with the second option, it keeps everything in play, and it preserves all the rights in the event that you finish up sooner, perhaps, in terms of your discussion, than, than, than maybe you're anticipating. If you don't, at that point, you can always remove it, even once it goes to a public hearing. You can, you can pull out and not pass a particular portion of that.
Okay, so you can do that, okay.
That may keep everything, again, it keeps everything moving along.
Okay, that's fine, as long as you can pull it out at some point if people aren't ready yet. I don't want to rush people when it hasn't even been addressed in how many years, and all of a sudden we're rushing. I don't like to rush. It's the slow steps here.
Slow and steady. Counsel Mendoza?
Yes, I was concerned about the timeline and what the need is, and I have all the facts yet, so I'd be concerned about. Again, I don't have all the facts yet on this, so I'd be concerned about pulling it out and having to restart the clock and maybe being detrimental to a specific project when there might be another solution. So I agree that probably the best course of action is just to leave it intact, have the Subcommittee meeting, get more information, and we still have the option of pulling that particular option out up to, I believe, the evening of the public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing? Very good. So I think that would be the wisest course of action at this time, and leave all our options open until the night of the public hearing.
Okay. Counsel Caulfield?
So, Mr. Mayor, what's before us is a motion by Council Elliot to have the council Subcommittee on Zoning convene a meeting prior to the public hearing.
Correct.
And I think that's going to be fair with everyone, because now it's going to give everyone a chance to go to the podium and offer their views, and the council will get some valuable information as well.
Correct. It will give people an opportunity to speak, and it will keep the matters before us so that we can reject it at a later date or accept what we choose based upon a Subcommittee and some public feedback. Council Elliot made the motion. Counsel Mendoza, I believe, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes, yes. Next order of business is report on subcommittees, and if I, do I have permission to give a report from up here?
Do it from the.
Thank you. We had a personnel Subcommittee meeting earlier to take up the motion co-authored by Council Dakota and Council Mendoza to begin the establishing goals and objectives as it relates to the city manager. The entire council was present, as well as the city manager, Mike Hebert, the data analysis and assistant to the manager, Henry Marchand, and a loyal clerk. And it was a very informative meeting, and the manager and his staff provided a document which should be posted online for those at home, outlining definitions, the FY12 goals, which is really going to be a combination of the second half of FY11, fiscal year 11, basically an 18-month calendar, as well as a sample access goals template. And it was explained that the definitions, we are going to establish a mission statement, which any business has and is critical to being operated as a business. And we're going to also establish goals, which will be general guidelines that explain what you want to achieve in your community. Usually, they will be long-term and global visions, but also very important in where the real work will come in, is focusing on and defining our objectives, which will be the implementation steps to attain the identified goals. And then we are also going to come up with, or the manager will provide some performance indicators. It's going to be critical for the council to evaluate and give their input. And on the document, an example, as this work in progress was presented tonight, is the city. city manager's goals, city services, financial management, public safety, neighborhood development, economic development, education and sustainability. All of these are obviously very broad topics, which will have many objectives below them or to more clearly identify each, as well as a sense that I think the Subcommittee and the council was here, and as well as the manager agreed that we should have a sense of prioritization for these. This will be, again, a work in progress and more of a roadmap for us as we proceed forward in setting budgets and agendas, and hopefully give the, as Counsel Dakota referenced, the council an opportunity to focus on the big picture and help our goals and priorities to drive our own agendas. Sometimes it's difficult getting bogged down with the minutia. Anybody want to-
Accept the reporters' report of progress.
Seconded by Counsel Murcia. All those in favor? Next order of business is one claim for property damage. Refer to the law department.
Refer to the law department.
Counsel Caulfield, seconded by Counsel Murphy. Next is the motions. Motion by Counsel Caulfield. City Council requests the city manager to assist without monetary contribution to Lithuanian community to erect a monument honoring their heritage and culture in the City Hall Plaza area. Seconded by Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, the city is extremely rich in ethnic diversity, and in and around the JFK Plaza and City Hall, you will see numerous monuments indicating the culture and the contributions to many ethnic groups, the Polish, the French, the Irish, the Greek, the Portuguese. Mayor Milonasa brought in a motion last week to have the manager assist the Armenian community with a monument. The Lithuanian community contacted me and asked if they could find some space around City Hall and do the same. The Lithuanian community has contributed immensely to our city, like many other ethnic groups, and I think the motion is well in order and well-deserving. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
I must want to point out, too, Mr. Mayor, there is no monetary issues with the city. They are going to finance and install this monument. It's just they need some direction from City Hall.
Thank you, Counsel Caulfield. Next, motion by Counsel Caulfield. City Council requests the city manager to have the property department address the inoperable restroom on the second floor of the Stocklosa School. Seconded by Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a call that that restroom hasn't worked properly since last May, and they want something done about it. So, Mr. Manager, I would appreciate, they would appreciate, if that is addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
If I may, Counsel, that there was a work order that was in place for that, and that restroom has been repaired.
It has been repaired? When?
I received a report today-
Because I received a call like last Thursday.
Yeah, I received a report today that it was both from the Superintendent of Schools as well as from the DPW that that was repaired. And if I may, anytime there's a restroom or, you know, an operational issue like that, if that's, you know, if there's a problem there, bring it to my attention right away, and we'll, Mr. Marchand and I will make sure the property department goes out and takes care of it.
Well, the frustrating thing, and I'm not pointing a finger at you, Mr. Manager, or your administration, the frustrating thing is people at the Stocklosa School called repeatedly to get it fixed, and nothing was done.
I know that when I was speaking with the school administration, they had placed a work order on this, and they knew it was taking place, and they were, again, we'll follow up to see what the work order process was, but it has been repaired.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Next, motion by Counsel Murphy. City Council requests the city manager to report on the long and short-term plans for supervision of the Lowell Youth Council. Seconded by Counsel Rita Murcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very simply, as I understand it, the person responsible for supervision has since left. But I think it would be helpful to understand the long-term role that the city intends to play in the council, because I think consistency is really important for that particular program. And that's pretty much it. So, I look forward to the report. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Aye. Counsel Rita Murcia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Before we adjourn, I would move for a suspension of the rules to inform my colleagues and the public about a workshop regarding human trafficking slash exploitation, if I could suspend the rules then.
Motion to suspend? Seconded by Counsel Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I received a call on Sunday evening from the Sisters of Notre Dame, who are waging their own campaign at this time regarding the exploitation and human trafficking of children throughout the nation, as well as in this immediate area. Each year, an estimated 1.2 million children fall victim to sexual trafficking and/or forced labor. Geographical areas are not discriminated on. It can, and it does happen, right here at home. In an article in the Sun newspaper, Attorney General Martha Coakley's office hosted a hearing about how to limit the growth of human trafficking and the illegal online sex trade. Earlier in the year, she called on Craigslist to remove its adult service section. It is alarming the number of adults and children in forced labor, bonded labor, and forced prostitution, and this workshop is important enough, so much so that the Sisters of Notre Dame of the Merrimack Valley are sponsoring a free workshop for coworkers, friends, and the general public to learn more about this scourge that has taken over cities and towns throughout the country. The free workshop is being held on Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Holy Family Parish Hall at 75 Chamberlain Street in Lowell. 9:00 a.m. is the registration and coffee, and the program begins promptly at 9:30. Now, I could have made this motion and put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, but it's a voting day, and the people who would probably be watching and be interested in this may be outholding signs of voting instead. So, I thought that this would be the right time to announce this event. And if there are any questions, I have here this evening two Sisters of Notre Dame, Sister Mary Coffey and Sister Joanne Gregwa. If there's any questions, I want to thank you for allowing me to get this message out. And again, if anyone wants to attend this free workshop, it's Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And I also want to say that Counsel Frankie Dakota is on a task force in this regard, and it's too bad we couldn't have known this earlier, or you could have presented it to your board, but, in your committee. But this is an important issue, and I thought that it was relevant that I bring it forward now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murcia. Counsel Dakota?
Thank you very much. While we're on the topic, I just would like to highlight that there will be a parent information session at the Stocklosa School on November 4th about this issue to provide the parents with some of the signs to look out for when they're meeting with their children. It is for the parents of sixth-grade children in the city, starting at Stocklosa School. It's at 6 o'clock, 6 to 7, 6 to 8 o'clock, and you'll get more information. I understand that the school department has approved some classes for the sixth-grade students, but they require parental consent to attend those, so you'll find out some more information about that if you're able to make it. Thank you for bringing this up, Counsel Murcia.
And I also, Mr. Vice Mayor, want to say that there are certain areas in which you could protect yourself, and I just, this is probably not in the same vein as this, but it's something that I read today, and I thought it blended in a little bit. There are ways that you can stop this from happening. You have to educate and communicate with your family just by being more observant. And I know that you could say, oh, my God, she's turning paranoid, but I'd rather be paranoid than dead. And I know that when you go shopping in a mall or food shopping or whatever, if a van is parked aside of you very closely, then it'd be better if you went in and got someone to walk you back out. You don't know if you're going to be dragged in that van. I mean, simple little things like that, that we're not aware of. When you come out of shopping and you're trying to balance your checkbook in your car, there's people looking at you. So, the best thing to do is, when you get out of these shopping areas, get in your car, lock it, and take off. Go. But, so that, there's many things that, maybe this workshop will talk about things like that. So, I mean, I could go on for 10 more other things that I've read, and I think it's very important, because the world today is changing, and people are desperate and want to hurt other people. And so, I want to thank the Sisters of Notre Dame for bringing this campaign forward. It's a very important issue, and thank you for letting me say this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Mendoza?
Yeah, just a quick question on the location of, because when I saw Holy Family Parish Hall, I thought the Sacred Heart School, but I believe this is actually at St. Marie's, maybe. This is, yeah, so this is at St. Marie's Church proper in Parish Hall there.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mendoza. Nothing further? I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Counsel Caulfield, seconded by Counsel Martin. All those in favor?